If you have not signed in on the attendance sheets, please do so.
But it's showing five two.
When I looked it up, I just want to see how we compare.
In the ketchup though, because deer season started too.
Where'd you find that information at?
I, I just looked it up on Bing.com.
Benton County. He's been wanting one for a year. He's been researching it for six months. Lowe's had him reduced a little bit.
Is that in the Bee?
Well, I paid time savings.
I'm just gonna be in here.
How much you got in Lowe's?
What we have, what we have, I think we're actually, quarter of it is back there. Then we have our rental duplex, so he's got to load it in the trailer and car.
I've got a, well, overall, I probably, it's in my place, two lots.
I don't know.
About three acres besides you. I've got a big move over. It's in a VDR.
Did you, when you read this, did you change the? Was that that way? That's why it said aid money. It's federal statement.
That's what it was. It changed nothing.
She was saying there's not an increase.
It's really federal.
We have to do it every year.
That reason.
It's an annual, I changed, it's an annual update.
Hello, Blacko. Welcome back. We've been to Oklahoma, it's always you colors, orange, see you. You fit right in.
We've been Rome, right?
That's right, that's right.
Maybe I guess I should have worn a blue and gold of Tulsa.
Yeah, so it matched.
Good. Hurricane, hurricane colors.
Okay, Keith.
We get an increase.
Mike, could you bring the, um, have the forum sheet up, please?
I wonder where Tom's at. I can, we'll just go ahead and get started.
Heard anything from Keith?
No. I like.
Thank you, sir.
The smell.
She does a hell of a job, and I said, good.
Oh, I thought she was gonna pay me.
I don't know, but I just let her do it. She likes that part of it anyway.
We just will kick this thing off.
So now, it's gotten down, I noticed, you know, I looked at it last week.
I don't know where Tom's at. We just.
So we skipped the whole week.
God, he called, I'm not gonna call.
Here he comes, here he comes, here he comes.
Come on, Kicklack, let's go.
By the way, you do know that all of this is for, I went through about seven or eight minutes of conversations before I got to that. The conversations are being watched. Sometimes I pay attention, most of the time I don't. Thank you, thank you.
Turn around backwards.
Keith didn't pick up his packet. Keith did not pick up his packet.
Hello, Tom. Are you ready?
And she's been in school for a month.
Again, that's your group, Ben, Frank, Dan, yeah.
A reminder to please sign in on the attendance sheet if you have not already done so, employees included. Yes, I do, you're signing up, I do roll call.
Call the order, meeting to order. You all will please stand and follow me in the pledge and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Eric Shine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us, the awesome weather that we've been receiving here lately, and Lord, we just thank you for the health that you've given us in every day. And, Lord, we just ask you to give us direction and give us your wisdom this evening as we go throughout these proceedings. We just ask us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Shine.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams. Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Next item is a consent agenda, which contains the Lowell City Council minutes from the regular meeting of August the 18th.
Approve those next meetings, and we'll have a chance to read them.
Pardon?
Can we approve them next meeting?
We can table them till the next meeting.
I, I didn't set him right, I'm sorry.
Okay. Everybody in favor, table them to the next meeting?
So good.
Okay, table till the next meeting. Next item is a public forum. Mark Hughes.
I'm gonna talk, but I want all y'all to see this. Does it matter if I come fix my answer there?
It seemed unpleasant to me.
Does it smell unpleasant? Yes, disgusting, isn't it? Okay, and that's y'alls, if you want to keep it.
Oh, thank you.
Mark Hughes, 515 Evergreen Circle, Lowell, Arkansas. I've lived there for about 15 years. Usually, I'm working on the road and I'm out for the week and I come back on Fridays. This week, I happen to be in Lowell all week long, to my pleasure. Has anyone else smelled Lowell around the Evergreen Circle? There is a, a stench. It smells like chicken poop. That's what that is. That is being distributed in the field behind me. This, this afternoon, it was so bad that I called the mayor's office. Apparently, he was in meetings and hadn't had a chance to get back to me. I also talked to my councilman here about it. Since then, I've talked to my neighbors, and I went from neighborhood to neighborhood to try and locate, is it a dead body somewhere? Is it a dead animal somewhere? Is it an individual, or what, what's causing this smell? As I went around Evergreen Circle and Somerset, it is atrocious. As I was driving through those neighborhoods, people were going like this in their cars, indicating that they were smelling the same bad smell. As I come to the stop sign there, past Wardnell Park, and turned on that road that's, I can't think of what the name of the road is right now, Old Wire Road, and you turn left.
Yes.
That was on the road, and that's what I picked up to show you people here. That is what has been distributed in my, in the field directly behind my yard. There was a spreader truck and people operating the spreader truck in that field. Now, obviously, when it rains, my yard's downhill from that field, so we know what's gonna happen. But there is more concern that I have. As I was talking to my neighbors, and all of my neighbors are upset. I told them I was coming here and that I would speak on their behalf, and they're all upset. If it would be more powerful, I can fill these chairs on our next council meeting to make the point a little more clear. But as I was talking to my neighbor across the street, she happened to tell me about histoplasmosis, a disease that she happened to have. That comes from, and I didn't have a lot, lot of time to get this off the internet, but that comes from, a disease is acquired by inhaling the spore stage of the fungus. Contaminated, and it comes from contaminated soil found in chicken coops. Minimum exposed, what can be done to prevent the, the, the spread of histoplasmosis is to minimize the exposure to dust and contaminate and contaminated and enclosed environments such as chicken coops and their surrounding soil. So it comes from chicken poop dust. So when they're putting that stuff, that, and if you go in my living room right now, which usually smells really nice, it smells like that box. And it, I've got a headache. It's disgusted me, and, and I'm, I'm very upset about it, obviously. If you put chicken litter or, or poop in a spreader and you spread it around, it is reasonable for us to think that there's gonna be some of that dust out in the air where my kids play, where the kids, the residents of Lowell's kids are out in, in the neighborhood playing. Now, I don't know the guy that owns the land. I'm sure he's a very nice person, and I'm not out to get him or anything. I don't know him. And, and, and I know the, the logic behind fertilizing a field, but I cannot come home and, and have this. I, I've left the mayor with a copy of what Arkansas code of nuisance is defined as, and it's conduct within a municipality which unreasonably interferes with the use and enjoyment of other land, including conduct on property which disturbs the peaceful, quiet, and undisturbed use of, and enjoyment of nearby property. There are also Arkansas state law codes that relates to common nuances pertaining to health and safety codes. Now, take that in your car on your way home and think about me having to, to spend the next couple of, it's, it's on the field. There's nothing we can do about it now. It's on the field. But think about having, what, what am I supposed to go? Do, go into a hotel room for the next couple of days? That's why I'm here this week, 'cause that's where I usually am. The smell is unacceptable. The health makes me angry. It really makes me angry. I think under those two circumstances, I'm hoping that, that we can come up with a solution here to prevent this from happening again, so that I don't have to go and hire a lawyer and it costs me money. But I'm willing to do that for the, for the protection of my children. Darren Brock, you, you've coached Sabrina. Would you want one of your, one of your, you know, girls that you've coached to get a, a disease which apparently histoplasmosis can be fatal? So, you know, we don't, this is not something, we need to get real aggressive and real serious about this. I certainly am very in tune, very focused. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I'm sure it is. They spread it behind my house last year.
Where is this?
Mark, is that field inside the city limits?
It is.
It is. Thank you. I thought it was.
Where, where is, where do you live?
Evergreen Circle.
Off of Honeysuckle.
Off of Honeysuckle, to the east.
And the field actually butts up to Honeysuckle for just a very short section between two neighborhoods.
Well, you can smell this all the way over where I live, which is Center Point subdivision, over that way. I.
It smells bad in our neighborhood.
Did kinda like, but we smell it once every year. I, we, it seems like every year we smell this smell.
Every year we smell it, and it's because of this happening. This year, that's why I said I've lived here fifteen years. The last two years, I don't know where he's getting his chicken poops from, but it's getting, it's getting really bad. Now, in the past, I've been, uh, potential health risk, you know, to it, but I would say all the houses that were that field, that does one year. It was a few years ago, there was yellow stuff in my dog's water dish, and I had the, the Billy, Lieutenant Billy, with the, with the code enforcement come out, and he took it, and took it off for testing, and, and they made them stop running the spreader that year. They, he made them stop right then, because he, he, he responded quickly and saw this big cloud, you know, as you see in the spreader, and it was coating the whole side of my house. My kids reset, my kids, you know, yeah, I chose to live there. I did. I chose to live there, but I had no idea that this was going on.
Mayor, did they do the field over by your house, behind your house?
They, they, last year, yes, they, they put it on a, a field behind my house. I live on Center Drive, on the west side of Center Point Park, and there's probably a forty, fifty, sixty acre field back there.
But they haven't done it, just like.
Not this year.
So that smell's coming all the way over there from.
You can, this afternoon, you could begin to smell it out here pretty bad.
You could smell it when you walked up.
My house, they're mocking over.
I bet it does. That box is really beginning to smell up this room, too, so. You think, you think we might.
So realistically, what can.
Take it out of here.
Do you write an ordinance around it?
Take that out.
Let's hear what you got to say there.
Um, right.
Hey, excuse me.
You know, sir.
Since I'm a councilman involved, and I did take a trip over there when I got a call this evening about.
Thank you, Paul.
It's not Paul Sumpelaro.
And, believe me, I've lived thirty years, and I, it's an agriculture area, and I've smelled chicken litter before, but this is about as intense as I've ever smelled, you know. That is no kidding.
What he just did, the officer, I don't have that choice. That's my point. I don't have to do that. If I can do that, that'd be happy. I've got to go to my house and smell that box all night long for the next two days. So do my kids. We're gonna go get a hotel room.
Right. Does anyone know the zoning? It's Mike in here. Mary, anyone, guys, do we know the zoning? I'm just not sure if it's an agricultural zone, chief, anybody? No, sir. It's, I mean, that's why Benton County's green is 'cause of chicken litter. I mean. That's what I'm wondering, are we in the limits? If we're, you know, and, and sir, you brought us a code, and thanks so much, and notice that there's a key phrase in there, "within a municipality." And that comes out of law written for cities, and there's also common law on nuisances, famous Madonia case. But if you, um, if, if you, sir, have a private right of action, first of all, all right, I'm not gonna advise you on that, I'm just gonna tell you that you have a private right of action. If someone is making your life intolerable by their invasion of particulate, which is all that smell is, right, it's something in the air, or something that's so unreasonable, and it could have been reasonable twenty years ago, but it's become unreasonable now because of the way the land is used, then you have a private right of action. In other words, you can hire a lawyer and y'all can explore that, okay? The city may also have an issue with code enforcement and, and also zoning. We also may have an ordinance on the books, and forgive me for not knowing, just about spreading, you know, this kind of fertilizer on an open space like this. If not, yes, we can write one. We can regulate what's put on the ground in, in Lowell, Arkansas. The, the only copy I'm gonna say is the farmer's lobby, you know, from all the way down in Helena to here. They've certainly got laws written to protect what they do. We all know that. We're in a rural state, a farming state, so we may not be free to do whatever we want to chicken litter, but we sure can look into that and try. And, and we've been talking about this, y'all, for years, how Lowell has changed and is changing. We've adopted and heavily re-zoned the place. There's a lot less agricultural use even provided for. I mean, look what we did out west. Turned it from basically agricultural use zone to several different kinds of mixed use zones.
That, if that area is actually in Benton County?
There's not much we can do.
It's in our planning area? Will that make any difference whatsoever for us being able to affect anything?
The planning area allows us to control development, but not just the current use, no ma'am. So if it's in Benton County, there's not, really, I don't think there's much we can do, but sir, that doesn't prohibit you from doing something to solve that problem. And I know you don't want to sue your neighbor, and I'm not suggesting you do, but you can certainly explore that.
Have you tried to talk with, talk to the, your neighbor there at all?
I haven't yet.
I mean, there's gotta be other practices. I'm sure that chicken litter is probably the cheapest method.
Yeah, the best.
You know what, y'all, invite him for a backyard barbecue.
Tonight.
Tonight.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I guess I need to find out how long is that hand.
Yeah.
Talk to that person. Am I understanding that, is anything gonna be done here?
What we'll do is, we'll ask Mr. Kicklack, he's our attorney, to look into it and see if there's something the city can do, and you, you left us your phone number, and we'll contact you back.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And looking on the internet, I understand that there are right-to-farm states, but there is also a case of Orin of Orin, or something like that, that, that won against the right-to-farm states where right-to-farm laws are unconstitutional.
Is that the Dimples case? No?
I, I read it so quickly because I was wanting to.
Oh, yes, sir. Well, look, it's always a balancing of interests, right, and my guess is, and y'all, sometimes I'm wrong, that area's probably more residential now than, than agricultural. And so that's what happens. You simply cannot maintain the intensity of some of those uses and intensity, this, this kind of smell and invasion is what we're talking about, so.
Wouldn't it fall under our nuisance?
It, it may fall under our nuisance law, certainly, and, and that's a state law, but it most certainly falls under the common law of nuisance, which is, which gives an individual a right of action, you know.
I think Mary looked into our nuisance law, and you said it doesn't come under that.
You didn't, you didn't spell anything out in that ordinance that we have, or that doesn't mean, I guess, that it don't come under that. But then I looked up the air pollution law, state law, and I, I don't see anything, and that's a lot about fire and smoke, so I don't know now. I don't, I haven't got anything yet, but what he gave you, I think, is closer to anything that, anything else we have. That number there.
I'm just gonna say one more thing. You may wanna call DEQ as well, just because we're talking about water now, okay, and DEQ is, if there's one thing they wanna talk about, it's water, okay? So if that is leaching down into water, we're close enough to Illinois watershed that they're gonna be interested. They don't want any trouble right now with chicken litter leaching into the groundwater, so you might wanna light those guys up. All right. DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, in Little Rock, Arkansas. There's also a local lawyer that used to work for him, named Mark Waller. You can give him a call. But either way, you, you try to get their attention as well.
I will do so. Thank you very much.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. No old business. We'll go into our new business. Resolution authorizing the rate of property tax for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, for the year 2009 to be collected in 2010. Mary?
Every year, we have to redo this resolution. It's the same amount. Everything's the same as last year, and the year before that, and the year before that. We just have to redo it every year.
This is not an increase, this is?
No. Just a continuation of what we have now.
It's a housekeeping type thing, Eric. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Keith Wil, oh, sorry, no, Keith Williams. Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
This will be resolution number zero nine dash zero eight.
Next item is an ordinance establishing sewer line construction cost recovery fee for the Christie Creek sanitary sewer extension and for other purposes. This is of similar ordinance to, well, in fact, it's the same way. Exhibit B has been revised. It's, it's the same ordinance that we passed on the I-540 sewer line. It helps recover, on Christie Creek, it'll help us recover about seventy-six percent of the cost using the same five cents per square foot. On the I-540 sewer line, the five cents a foot help us recover seventy-three percent of the sewer line. So sticking with the nickel a foot ordinance, we'll collect it when it's fully, everybody's all hooked up. There's, uh, three hundred and forty-five acres there. It's gonna take a while to hook 'em up. But we'll recover seventy-six percent of the nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar cost.
So on top of the two thousand per acre, it's five cents a foot, or is those broken out? If you don't have an acre, it's five cents a foot?
No. The, the, we offered the people to, a chance to voluntarily pay two thousand dollars an acre upfront. That's a little less than a nickel a foot, and some of these people there on the list, they opted to go ahead and pay it and get it over with. So they're, they're part of the sewer line. We'll be paid when they bring their check in. They want to wait until we start construction.
So once, once the sewer line's complete, the two thousand dollar an acre won't apply anymore. It'll be five cents a foot, correct?
Once we start construction. It's dead in the water now.
Okay.
It's a nickel a foot from here on out. Any other questions?
Have they started construction?
Pardon?
Have they started?
We're having a pre-construction meeting the twenty-second. Ready to get started. The contractor has submitted his bond, and he has signed the contract. And I believe it's the twenty-second or twenty-third when we have the pre-construction meeting, and he's expected to start soon after. The, the goal is to get that built by the end of the year. So they're gonna have to hump it right along, 'cause it's a long ways, and it's some pretty rough terrain through there, but our engineer said he, he doesn't see any reason they can't do it by the end of the year. I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on third and final reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
An ordinance establishing sewer line construction cost recovery fee for the Christie Creek sanitary sewer extension and other purposes. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Eric Shine.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
This will be ordinance number eight five nine.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending the city of Lowell ordinances and code of ordinances to alter the composition and terms for the board of zoning adjustments. Any questions?
Why three people?
Pardon?
Why three?
What this amounts to, Marty, in my view, the board of adjustments is our Supreme Court, because you go from the board of adjustments to a circuit court. And it's my view that we can definitely find three people in this city that have a history of making some tough decisions and will uphold the city ordinances and codes. And I have two people that have already agreed to serve on this commission. And in my own view, I think three is a plenty. Now, you know, if you have concerns, speak up.
What kind of compensation?
We'll cross that bridge later on. We will have to pay them something for the meeting. Now, the board of adjustments will meet on demand. I can't, I was going to ask Michael, and he didn't get back in town in time. About how many times a year will items go before the board of adjustments, Michael?
I would say at least once a month.
Okay.
So is there already a board of adjustments today, and who?
The way it's set up, the planning commission also serves as the board of adjustments. What that amounts to, if you go before the planning commission and gets turned down, and the customer appeals it, he goes before the same seven people, asking them to overturn their decision. And personally, that's not right, in my view.
Agreed.
That's why it's come time to do this. One of the big things that we have to do, we've got building services, code people, and everybody else out here, including all of us, police, fire, myself, everybody. We have a responsibility to follow the codes and ordinances that's passed by the council. It's kind of tough to do that when you get your legs cut off at the knees by a board of adjustments. And that's what's bringing this all up. It's all come up over the swimming pool deal, as I know you all have heard. That's what did it. And I think it's time to change.
Perry, look at this. You're suggesting three people for five-year terms.
Yes.
And a quorum is all three people, so any one of them being absent, ill, or out of town would mean they can't meet. I might be more comfortable with five people in three-year terms than three people locked in for five years.
Well, how does anybody else feel? There'll be no scheduled meeting on this. In other words, it won't be the third Thursday of every month. And Chris Sullivan will be the coordinator for this board. That will be her job to make sure they're all three available on a given night so that we can make the proper publications for public hearings and stuff.
I kind of go along with Darren on that, because when you, as someone that's had to go before a board of adjustment, you kind of would like to see more than three people making a decision about your, whatever the issue might be. I think because it is something that passes judgment and can really, to me, it's more. It's kind of like having eight people on the council. We check and balance each other. That's what it's about. I feel like three people probably might be perceived as... I think you would do better with five people.
Tom? I just want to say, per the state law, they're going to establish a minimum meeting schedule. But that literally could be one a year, two a year, four a year. And then they could meet as required, but they might have that one a year just to make sure they update their rules and such, do their business, and then otherwise, as required. And, you know, it could be that they're required three times in one month, although that would be difficult notice-wise, and then, you know, not for another three or four months. Now, three, Marty, is the minimum permitted by state law. It's what's contemplated. You either select a number, you know, three is the minimum, or you use the planning commission, and they take off the one hat and put on the other. Y'all have seen that, I imagine. They start off with a meeting as board of adjustment if they need to, et cetera. I want to make sure that also we know the very limited things they do. They either hear appeals from staff, which means appeals from, you know, certainly the planning director, and maybe code enforcement, if code enforcement is enforcing something that fits in the zoning ordinance and not just like a building code that comes outside the building, the zoning ordinance. That's one thing they do, hear appeals from staff. So if the planning director says, "You've got to get a final plat," and to get that final plat, you're going to have to have 20-foot-wide roads, and they say, "Nuh-uh." Ever remember this one? "I want a smaller road." Remember the fellow with all the gold jewelry that used to come in here all the time? That's something that could be appealed to the board of zoning adjustment, okay? Then their word is final. You go to court after that. Or hear appeal from variances, I mean, hear requests for variances. And we all know what that is. So that's the limited things they do, just those two things. And then, again, I think the mayor just asked me to write this per state law. And, you know, state law allows for three. In fact, that's the number that they mentioned, three members, you know? So that's sort of the explanation for that. Y'all are free to make another number. I certainly suggest it'd be odd, an odd number, otherwise. That's the explanation.
I think it's, in theory, I think it's a good idea, because it's really kind of, to me, it's kind of strange to go try to get your plans through one place, and then if you've got to get a variance, you've got to go to the same people again, which I think is a horrible conflict for the planning commission, number one. But I am kind of thinking that it would do better to have maybe five.
How many members are on the appeal board when you appeal your taxes? Are there just three? Huh? I think there are just three. That's customary. What I was concerned about, you have so many members, you overwhelm a person sitting out there. It's just like conducting employment interviews. If you've got two or three people conducting the interview, you overwhelm that applicant.
That doesn't matter.
And that's why I wanted to keep it to three.
They don't care.
Huh?
It doesn't matter whether they're overwhelmed. If they're coming to do it, they're...
Just trying to be fair to the people, Marty. That's all.
Well, I think five people would be fairer than three, making a decision that might affect my livelihood.
How many want to change it to five?
I think probably.
Four? How many want to leave it at three? I'll get to vote. Leave it at three. Any other questions on the board of adjustments?
I'd like to move that we place this on first reading by title only.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the city of Lowell ordinances and code of ordinances to alter the composition and terms for the board of zoning adjustment.
All right, so y'all have just done a first reading. That's what the motion was, and you don't need to vote on that. You've just, you've done your first reading. You fulfill the reading requirement by suspending a part of the rule. You allowed the mayor to read it by title only. I appreciate that, because if you didn't, I bet he made me read it the whole thing. So it won't be voted on tonight unless someone else makes a motion to place it on third and final reading. It'll simply sit here until we come back again and make sure all the folks out there at Harvest can come in from the fields and see our next meeting, perchance. You've heard my lecture on that already. I won't bore you again with it. That's where we are, folks.
I'll entertain a motion to place it on third and final reading by title only here.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Who was the motion?
The motion now is placed on...
Yeah, I know, but who made that?
Paula, and then Kendall.
And then the second.
Kendall.
Got to play catch-up here. Paula Allred?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
No.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
No.
Linda Shimko?
No.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
That didn't pass.
It didn't pass. The motion failed.
It requires two-thirds to suspend that rule. So...
It was four to two.
We'll revisit...
Four to three.
So we'll just revisit that next meeting.
We'll bring it back next week and read it.
Or you could suspend the rule to pass it for the next meeting.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Lowell to utilize federal aid monies for the following project. Highway 264 widening I-540 to Gold Springs Road. Any questions?
What is the, what is the plan?
To widen 264 from I-540 to Gold Springs Road with the traffic signal. That's the plan.
I mean, go ahead.
Jerry?
Why would we, why do we choose to do that rather than, and cancel those other requests for the two job cancellations? I mean, why is this more important to do that than what we was going to do prior to that?
More important to do that than what?
Than to do the East Monroe extension and the Highway 71B and 264 interchange.
Left turn, okay.
Yes. Why is it more important?
This money, $2 million from the state, $600,000, $600,000 or $800,000 from the city, this was approved by the council in, I think, '06 for those purposes. I talked to the highway commission, and a million dollars of that goes to Monroe. And they told me that we don't know why you folks did that, because if we build that road, it has to be built to highway standards. It will cost you much more than if you build that road yourself. So learning of that, I felt like, okay. So we went to the traffic signal. We counted every left turn going north and every left turn going west for 12 hours a day for five days. Furnished that material to the state with the understanding that when wagon wheel road gets built, because a lot of that traffic comes up from Springdale and turns, and when Dixieland is done, it will take traffic off of this intersection. They agreed, and they've agreed to move that money to 264, because 264 may require five lanes. They say it's to the point now that it almost requires five lanes. They are going in now in revising the off-ramp going south. They're making a stacking lane, because the traffic can't turn right, because it's being held up at a stoplight that people want to go through. So the state, right now, is going up and down the exit ramps, looking for those places, and they're going to fix them. In fact, they've been out there. They've got the utilities moved, and I think they've done the surveying of where it goes. So that's underway. With that underway, it seemed more natural to take it on to Gold Springs Road, since that's about all the money we got at this time. That's why the money is suggested to be moved to 264.
If that's the most important thing we need to do, I guess that's what we need to do. I was just wondering why, you know, why we were doing that instead of...
That's why. That's why.
Jerry?
If this money's moved, what kind of timeframe? We even talked about scheduling and when construction would begin on that project.
2011.
2011.
And this will be a five-lane for that short distance until...
Right now, they think it'll be a five-lane. It may be a three-lane, but they think they're going to build it a five-lane, because the traffic coming in from the west is horrible out there of a morning and of an evening. It's bad.
I'm talking about what we're talking about doing, what we're approving to do here is...
We have to do what the state says is required. It's a state highway. The money is, there's so many dollars, and that's it.
So the big cast is widening the overpass, correct? Is that what we're talking about?
We're not going to widen the overpass. Oh, Lord, that $2 million won't handle widening that overpass.
So what are we exactly doing here? We're going up to Gold Springs from where? From the stoplight right there on...
54 exits, yeah.
That's $2.6 million or $2.8 million to do that?
A block, yeah.
Realize what it costs to build a full, five-lane road?
I'm confused. This said, okay, $2 million in federal aid highway funds. Is that what the state or what we budgeted?
That is shown as a federal aid. What it is, actually, is federal and state money.
The $2 million?
The $2 million.
Now then, we're going to match that $2 million?
We're going to pay our proportionate share of $800,000.
Where's, I'm not getting this. What's the $2 million for, then?
Pardon?
What's the $2 million if we're going to pay a portion of 800?
$2.8 million is what it's going to cost to do the project.
It will provide $2.8 million to build it.
Paying the two.
Mary, say, I...
I get it. I get it, finally.
Nope.
Michael?
I was just going to say, and I don't know if this will clarify. The federal government gives an allotment every year to the state of Arkansas, and the highway commission decides where that money goes. So it is state money, because they're the ones doling it out, but it comes from the federal government, and that's why it comes off as federal money. The important thing, too, is that by approving it this way and giving up the project that we are giving up here, we're able to do it in 2011. If we didn't do this, then we would be bumped to probably 2013 or beyond, because they're still working on 2007 projects right now. So that's why that's important. I just wanted to put that out.
This doesn't need to say something up to $800,000 or... And it also says, "We'll be responsible for all costs exceeding the available federal aid, all costs."
That's true.
So in 2011, if it's going to cost $4 million, that means we got to fork up $2 million.
No, no.
Mayor?
I talked to Trey Foster about that. They're the ones that sent this resolution up here. We didn't write it. This is our standard joint resolution. They said the way that works, if, when they get the design done, and the estimate is, let's say, $3 million, the city of Lowell then has a choice to kick in $1 million or pay for the engineering and put it on hold again.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that we do have $400,000 saved towards that.
I, I just wanted to say that we do have $400,000 saved towards that in accounts for the street department. And in our 2010 budget, we'll put another $2,000. So we'll have 600,000 saved. And so by 2011, there would be 800,000 in, in there. So we've been working on collecting this money and, and saving it for that. So we're not starting out from zero on this.
But Mary, was that money originally for the Monroe?
Yes. It was for this project, and the project is changing now. So it would be the same money.
Mr. Mayor, the great advantage that we gained from this is stacking lane coming off to alleviate some of the traffic flow.
That's true.
Is that correct? And believe me, we really got a problem. I know over there, my workers come from out in that direction. You know, in fact, one of them told me, he says, most dangerous part of my trip to Decatur, he drives all the way over there, he said, is the distance from here to the Gold Springs Road. After that, it's clean. But it is a zoo, well, we all know it is. We've been over through there. But anything that would leave any of that kind of stacking where you can have better flow of traffic has got to be helped.
We feel this will be a big help on, on development out west if we take it that Now, Jerry, we get calls quite frequently from people sitting out there waiting on that stoplight, wondering what's matter with it. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
This will be resolution number 09-09.
Any comments from the council members? Comments from the staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If no objection, we're adjourned.